Good evening and welcome to the September 3rd meeting of the East Point City Council. Madam City Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Shropshire, Councilmember Freely, Councilmember Ziegler, Councilmember Cummings, Councilmember Mitchell, Councilmember Butler, and Councilmember Martin Rogers. Mayor Holiday, will you have a call?
Thank you. Our Sergeant at Arms this evening is Captain Robinson. Let's stand for the pledge. Do we have anyone for invocation? Reverend. Be also ready. Just press the mic right there for me. And what's your name? Press the mic for me.
I'm sorry. Reverend Walter Mobley.
Which?
Pastor Victory Baptist Church in East Point.
Welcome. Would you please do our invocation?
Yes ma'am, thank you. Bless us, Lord, as we do the business of the city. Bless our councilpersons, bless our mayor, bless all the city employees of East Point, and help us, the citizens of this community, be better servants with you. Amen. Thank you.
So, um, tonight, we only have one presentation, and this actually came up post the meeting I had today around 4 o'clock. So, the ATL Airport CID's, which includes the areas of College Park, East Point, Haightville, some parts of Clayton County, and Atlanta, is exploring and rolling out different emerging mobility solutions. Recent announcement of the PRT, which will connect from the airport through the GICC area through funding by MARTA, is one project. PRT stands for Personal Rapid Transit, I believe, and it's a pilot. The PRT are autonomous shuttles, but they need guideways. Either, they either suspended in the air, or they actually have dedicated lanes. But this is being piloted at the airport in GICC. The other emerging mobility solution is, or strategy, is micro-transit. And so, the ATL Airport CID's received $2.6 million from the Atlanta Regional Transit Link Authority to operate micro-transit for two years. And so, micro-transit is basically public Uber or Lyft. And they are, the CID's are exploring vendors and look to be selecting a vendor within two weeks towards the end of September. Once they select a vendor for micro-transit, they will then go into a two to three month contract period, and during that period, they will be looking at different stops in different locations, which could include areas within Clayton County, College Park, East Point, Haightville, and Atlanta. And then, once the contract is final, they can launch the program within 30 to 60 days. And they're looking for a tentative launch in the first quarter of, towards the end of the first quarter of 2025, if not sooner, in areas like Camp Creek Marketplace, Fort Gillum, and others for different employees. There is another option. They have taken over the Transportation Management Authority that was previously under the City of Atlanta. They are now running that, and that is to transport employees within the ATL Airport CID area in the areas around the airport. Initially, it was 60,000, but now that the CID has taken over, it will be able to provide support with up to 200,000 employees within the CID network through the Transit, Transportation Management Authority. The other option is autonomous shuttles. And so, while the PRT is an autonomous shuttle, and the, I'm trying to go back through my notes. Where is it? Yes. So, autonomous shuttles, so basically identifying different areas where they can run autonomous shuttles that would actually be on demand, not on demand, so they would run on a schedule. And people, those schedules would be public, and people would know how the, the times to get from different spots or points of interest within the CID through usage of that autonomous shuttle. They are meeting with some vendors next week, towards the middle or end of the week regarding potential areas. They have been looking at some areas around Phoenix Boulevard and Clayton County and College Park. They've talked to Clayton County College Park regarding that. But they also are open to considering proposals of different areas within the CID area that we might be able to share with them. And so, the reason I added it as a presentation tonight is to give council an update regarding that and to also talk about the opportunity for there to be a map of an area that includes maybe like our hotel corridor on Virginia Avenue connecting to the airport, Camp Creek, the downtowns in Haightville, East Point. And for that to be considered, and for us to be able to consider giving staff the authority to talk with Haightville, as well as including our East Point Convention and Visitors Bureau in the discussion, because they're looking at the area around Virginia Avenue where our, the majority of our hotels are, to be able to work with them to come up with a proposed, or a map, an area, on a map that encompasses different stops within our cities and to the airport through our hotels. And then, also to be able to connect to a MARTA, the MARTA stop or a MARTA station, but that would require a level of responding to this rather quickly, because again, the meeting is next week, probably Wednesday or Thursday. And so, if council is inclined to give staff the authority to coordinate or work with Haightville and our East Point Convention and Visitors Bureau to bring us back a proposed map or an idea on Monday at our work session, then we'd be able to look at that and then also say whether or not we'd like for them to share that with the Arrow, the ATL CID's, to be able to share with the potential vendor so that they can look at that area on a map to decide like what might be the cost, what the stops could be, or just the level of feasibility around it. Councilmember Shropshire.
Thank you. So, the, what is the ask for us to vote to allow the?
To allow our staff, East Point staff, probably our Economic Development Department, Mr. Rogers, to work with Haightville and our East Point Convention and Visitors Bureau to be able, along with the Interim City Manager, to be able to come up with an area on a map that connects, shows a level of connectivity and possibility for autonomous shuttles, and to bring that back to us on Monday at the work session, so that council can review it.
Is that the, is that the motion?
It's, it's kind of long. So, the, the ask is that council authorize staff, Economic Development, and the Interim City Manager to work with staff at the City of Haightville and our East Point Convention and Visitors Bureau to create a map of an area for potential autonomous shuttles.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. So, Madam City Clerk, if you could also add this to our Monday work session agenda, so we can get the updates. Thank you so much, council. Next up. Any committee reports? The committees have met, is the report. And Budget and Finance is still looking at variances, as well as the proposed mileage rate. In HR, there's talk of the grievance policy and procedures, as well as evaluation of our direct reports. Okay. Adoption of the council agenda? Is there a motion? You said, Councilmember Martin Rogers said so moved. Is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next up is approval of city council minutes from the August 19th regular meeting of the East Point City Council. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Councilmember Shropshire.
Make a motion that we approve the city council regular meeting minutes from August the 19th.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we have a public hearing. I will turn it over to the city attorney to read the public hearing rules.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, council. Public hearing rules from Section 10-2219 provide the following. Before adopting any change to the zoning maps or the text of the zoning ordinance, the city council shall hold a public hearing following the public hearing by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Where a recommendation was made on the petition, public hearings before the city council shall be conducted as follows. The presiding officer will call for a motion to open and close the hearing. The presiding officer, or his or her designee, will introduce the proposed zoning amendment before the city council. Staff will then be called upon to present the planning commission's recommendation and summarize the staff's written report. Persons both favoring and opposing the proposed amendment will then be provided an opportunity to address the council. The applicant for the proposed amendment, or the applicant's designated representative, if any, will be entitled to speak first, followed by other speakers in favor of the proposal for a total of 15 minutes. Those who oppose the proposed zoning amendment will then be permitted to speak for a total of 15 minutes. By majority vote, the council may increase the total time for speakers, provided that each side is given the same amount of time. If there is more than one speaker for a side, the presiding officer may limit the time allotted to each speaker other than the zoning applicant. The zoning applicant may reserve a portion of his or her time for rebuttal. Speakers must adhere to the rules of decorum. Prior to speaking, each speaker shall identify himself or herself and state his or her current address. Each speaker shall speak only to the merits of the proposed zoning decision. Under consideration, shall address remarks only to the council, and shall refrain from making personal attacks on any other speaker. The presiding officer may refuse the speaker the right to continue if after first being cautioned, the speaker continues to violate the rules of decorum.
Thank you. I get a motion to open the public hearing.
Open a public hearing?
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. The public hearing is now open. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Ms. Smith, if you could come up and just walk us through the public hearing.
Will do. Thank you so much. Reference to this item, property located at 1910 Phillips Avenue. Property application number is 2023RZ-003-12. The applicant is B R G Consulting. The current zoning of the property is R1A, which is our urban residential zoning district. The request is for a rezoning from R1A Urban Residential to R3 Multi-Family Zoning District to develop new multifamily residential buildings. The applicant is also, the applicant is also seeking concurrent variances for relief from Section 10-2065E-D rear yard setback to reduce the 25-foot development standard to 16 feet 18 inches to utilize the existing condition. Just to state a little bit about the, the request for the variance, based on a proposal that was submitted to Planning Commission. After review and comment, the applicant is not moving forward with the variance. Just wanted to point that out. As stated previously, the current zoning is R1A, which is our urban residential zoning district classification. And the future land development map is redevelopment neighborhood. In the redevelopment neighborhood portion of our comprehensive plan, it calls for a future planning in this particular area, which will improve housing conditions. It also has an intent to reduce the number of vacant homes and vacant lots, which this property is currently a vacant lot. This neighborhood within the redevelopment area also is to include, and is intended to include, an assortment of housing types such as single-family, duplex, two-family, and multifamily. And this request is for a multifamily. This is a copy of the site plan for the property. And Planning Commission and staff has recommended approval of the rezoning petition to change from R1A residential to R3 multifamily. The zoning petition is in compliance with the comprehensive plan as redevelopment neighborhood character area supports an assortment of housing types to include the R1 zoning district as a typical zoning found in redevelopment neighborhood character area. Staff also recommends the following condition, that all city code ordinances such as zoning standards are adhered to, including, but not limited to landscaping buffer density requirements as stated in the comprehensive plan. And the density is four to eight units per acre. This property is approximately half an acre. And I'll stop there. We did receive a letter from the Center Park Neighborhood Association. It's a lengthy letter. It, do I need to read it into the record? It's a letter of support.
So, generally, we've never read letters of support into the record. It was emailed, though, I believe, to all of us. And so, council should have it. I know I received it. I believe everybody received it. But yeah, we've never read letters of support into the record.
Okay.
Not by staff. Somebody else was here. All right. That's it for your presentation? We are, oh, hold on. Let me go to the city attorney. They're requesting to read a letter of support into the record. That's not been our practice.
I would apply, Madam Mayor, that the speaker would need to be here, or another speaker, as you stated, could read it for that speaker, but not for the staff, because then that would be reading something in favor of the propos, you know, of the application without that speaker being here. So, I would think that if it's made a part of the record because you guys got it, and maybe it's attached to their staff report, but not read it into the record.
All right. Anyone who would like to speak in favor of the application, please come forward at this time. Anyone speaking in favor?
Good afternoon. Whitney Fuller, applicant. I would actually like to read some of the notes from the letter of support. This letter was addressed on August 26th.
Hold on just a moment.
Oh, yes.
So, um, city attorney, the letter wasn't written by the applicant. It's the letter that was receiving support. So, I just want to confirm with you.
I think that's fine. The applicant wants to use his, her time to read the letter. If that's, you know, their plea for the approval for the entitlement, I think that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On August 26th, the president of the Center Park Neighborhood Association, Curtis Carmichael, wrote, and it is a lengthy letter, so I will get to the point, that they do approve and support of the application. They cite that the application is essentially returning a non-conforming lot into conformity, and that they are interested in the parking being off-street, that there's lighting at the front of the street and near the building, that there's consistent landscaping throughout the property. And they do mention two other points that the City of East Point are asked to coordinate with, and that's street improvements, because 1910 Phillips Avenue dead ends at this property near the headwinds of Camp Creek. They also ask for more inclusive coordination when it comes to virtual public hearings. They cited having trouble accessing links to participate in public hearings when it deals with rezoning applications. And that concludes the points of the letter of support.
Does that conclude your comments?
It does.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition, come forward at this time. Anyone who would like to speak in opposition, come forward at this time. Anyone in opposition, you know, motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. The public hearing is closed.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry. Excuse me, I'm sorry. I make the motion that we approve the rezoning. Thank you. Make the motion to waive the first reading?
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion. All those in favor? All those opposed? I'm assuming that's unanimous. Okay. Is there any further action on this item?
Madam Mayor, I make the motion that we approve the rezoning as presented by staff.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion. So, the, the actual item says most, request to rezone with variances. And so, I believe in the presentation, staff indicated that the applicant is no longer seeking variances. Is that correct?
That's correct, Madam Mayor. And I would also ask if the motion does include to the condition that we have on the screen.
So, maybe if you could pull up the ordinance. I guess, share, if, share my screen, and I'll tell you when you share it. Let me pull it up.
They're taken out.
These the conditions that you were concerned about? Are these the actual conditions as of today?
That's a good question, Mayor. I just wanted to make sure that if there's a motion to approve based on staff recommendation, staff recommendation had conditions, a part of it, that the motion reflects that. But these conditions are different than what we saw, I think, in the staff report. So, we'll just have to be clear which ones are going to be applicable to the approval. These in the ordinance?
The conditions that were highlighted in the presentation are the correct conditions.
Yeah. So, the ordinance attached to the agenda doesn't have those conditions in it. So, I was going to ask Councilmember Butler to amend his motion to just adopt this ordinance, but those aren't there. Can you scroll to the top, please? So, um, Councilmember Butler, consider either amending a motion in this way, because I haven't called the, called for the question, or for someone to propose a friendly amendment. Ordinance to amend officials on the map of the City of East Point by rezoning properties located at 1910 Phillips Avenue from R1A Urban Residential District to R3 Multi-Family Residential District with, including the following conditions, if you can go back to the presentation where the conditions are. That all city code of ordinance such as zoning development standards are adhered to, including but not limited to landscaping buffers and density requirements as stated in the comprehensive plan. And, hold on real quick, Councilmember Butler, before you respond to that, because that's one condition. I don't know if there's others. Can you go to the next page? No, there's not others?
Yeah. To, to my comprehension, those conditions would be there with, it's not really a condition. That person automatically has to adopt by city codes or ordinances.
So, I'm just basing it based upon our city attorney, wanting to make sure that the conditions were included. The ordinance that's attached to the agenda has different conditions. And then, there's this condition. So, you can handle this one of three ways. You can amend your motion. It can be a friendly amendment. It can be tabled so that the ordinance could actually be updated. And then, we can adopt the ordinance with the right language.
I, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. I want to comply with what you're asking. I don't see the conditions other than city code of ordinance. Is that, is that what you're speaking to?
Yeah. I just, that's the one I just read. My concern is, though, that the previous ordinance had about four conditions. And so, I think the city attorney and staff should make sure that whatever the conditions are, that the ordinance actually reflects it. And if we table the item, then we can remove it from the table before we go into executive session. They can confer on that and get us the ordinance with the right conditions. I'm not trying to impose more or less. I'm just concerned that- I'm not trying to impose more or less. I'm just concerned that the city attorney wanted to make sure that the ordinance was approved with conditions. The conditions that are in the ordinance attached to the agenda don't reflect the conditions being recommended here, and I think it would be prudent to table it to get that clarification so that we can make the motion to adopt the ordinance and ensure that the right conditions are there.
Okay. Having said that, before we go there, are there additional conditions that were in the ordinance that are not here that you want to include in this?
No.
Okay. So it's just abide by the city code? It says staff also recommend the follow condition that all city code of ordinance such as zoning development XYZ be adhered to. Is that all that you require?
That's correct.
So Madam Mayor, I'll make the motion this way. Motion to approve the redevelopment of 1019, I'm sorry, rezoning, thank you, the rezoning of 1910 Phillips Avenue with staff recommendation of conditions that city code of ordinance such as zoning development standards are adhered to, including but not limited to landscaping, buffers, and density requirements as stated in the comprehensive plan.
The motion has been amended. Does the second still stand, or is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded any discussion?
Discussion.
Councilmember Shropshire?
Can you go back to the other conditions that's in the ordinance? So let me ask you, why were these conditions removed?
Those conditions... Those conditions appear to be from a different case, however... Let me look at applicants. Can I confer with staff for a moment? Thank you.
Would you like to table this?
I think, so there could be a substitute motion to table. Again, I just don't know that we're ready, but we can get ready. Okay. We get a substitute motion.
I'll make a motion to table this item.
Second motion.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we table this item, which means it will be discussed before we go into executive session. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next up is the public hearing on the property tax mileage rate. Madam City Attorney, I believe there are different rules for this public hearing, so if you could read those, please.
Public hearings shall be, and this is Rule 29, public hearings shall be advertised as per the ordinance. The presiding officer will call for a motion to open and close the hearing. Those in favor of the subject will speak first for a total of 15 minutes. Each speaker will be limited to not more than three minutes. Those who oppose the subject will then speak for a total of 15 minutes. Each speaker will be limited to not more than three minutes. Speakers may give a total of three minutes to another speaker after all of those present have had an opportunity to speak. Residents will be given first priority to speak. After all residents have been given an opportunity to speak, non-residents may speak. By majority vote, the council may increase the total time for each side of the subject to a total of 30 minutes per side. Each side will be given the same amount of time. Speakers must adhere to the rules of decorum.
Thank you. Can we get a motion to open the public hearing, please? Is there a second?
Do we have to read the first, weigh the first reading?
We got to have a public reading, public hearing first. We won't be taking action. This is just the first public hearing on the mileage rate. There's a motion on the floor to open the public hearing. Is there a second? It's been moved and properly seconded any discussion. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Brown?
Yes, Madam Mayor, if we can get the Finance Department, Mr. Jeff Jackson, and Shannon Golden to come up and walk us through this first public hearing on the budget, on the taxes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Official Code of Georgia 48-532 requires that each levying and recommending authority to annually publish the assessed taxable value of all property by class and in total, the proposed mileage rate for the levying and recommending authorities purposes for the current calendar year, and assess taxable values and mileage rates for each of the immediately preceding five calendar years. The advertisement must also indicate the percentage increase and total dollar increase for each year advertised. Official Code of Georgia 48-5-32 also requires each levying and recommending authority to complete a rollback mileage rate. On the screen, you will see that these are the five preceding years that leads up to the fiscal year 2425, where we have real and personal totaling $2,295,748,371. Our motor vehicle totals $4,52,630, and mobile homes total $76,119. The gross total of all those are $2,299,877,120, less the exemptions, which total $132,690,908, which brings our net total to $2,167,186,212. With the proposed mileage rate of 13, that brings the net taxes levied that we expect at $28,173,421, which is an increase of $2,409,970 over the previous year, 9.35%. The rollback mileage rate amounts to 12, and we're proposing 13, which is an 8.33% increase over the rollback mileage rate. This slide will show you all of the preceding years from January 15 through this year, which shows that in 15, 16, and 17, the mileage rate was 15. We decreased it to 13.89 in 18, decreased it again in 19 to 13.45 for two years, 19 and 20, decreased to 13.25 in 21. In the last two years, it has been 13, and we also show that we're asking 13 this year. This slide shows the net taxes levied for each of the preceding years, and each year it has increased. This slide will show you the fair market value of a home in 2023 was 4, would be $400,000, with a minus value of $2,000, which means the assessed value would be $158,000. Milage rate at 13 will leave your taxes at $2,054. That was last year. With the 8.33% increase this year, that same home would go up to $433,320. The assessed value would be $171,328. At 13, the mileage rate would then, the tax would then be $2,227.26. That's a difference of $173.26. If divided into monthly increases, it would be $14.44, $47.47 in daily increases. This slide will show you the value of a home last year that might have been $300,000. This year is $324,990. At 40% minus to 2,000, it would be $127,996 that they would be taxed on. At a mileage rate of 13, that brings the taxes to $1,663.95. That's an increase of $129.95 per month, an increase of $10.83 per day, an increase of 36 cents. And that's our slide for this evening.
All right. Thank you so much for the presentation. We are here on the public hearing on the property tax mileage rate for the City of East Point. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Anyone who would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Motion to close the public hearing?
Madam Mayor, I make the motion that we close the public hearing?
It's been moved and properly seconded any discussion. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. The public hearing is now closed. Our next public hearing will be on September the 16th, followed by October the 7th. So we'll have two more public hearings on the tax, property tax mileage rate. Do we have any public comments this evening?
No public comments this evening.
You said no? Okay. Next up is agenda item. Can we get a motion to open the floor for discussion and possible action on Impact Fee Advisory Committee? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded any discussion. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. The floor is now open. Mr. Brown?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council have Ms. Etcheverria come up and walk us through the Impact Fee Advisory Committee.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. So August 12, 2024, East Point City Council advised me to definitely attend the DDA meeting, the Downtown Development Authority meeting. On August 21, 2024, the Downtown Development Authority voted and accepted the appointment as the Impact Fee Advisory Committee. So in my prior presentation, we could do five people or 10, as long as 50% of that met the criteria of being in a development, building, or real estate industries. So the DDA has seven members with only two meeting that criteria. So my request tonight is to see if Mayor and Council will appoint three additional members to fulfill the 50% criteria for the Impact Fee Development Advisory Committee.
So Sonya Booker is in real estate?
Yes, so what I did was I received the resumes of the DDA committee, and we passed that along to our consultants, and based off of their review, we need three additional members.
So I'm confused.
So I didn't, I omitted names for, now that it's private, because I'm 100% sure.
Okay.
Yes, so the chairperson is a developer, the vice-chairperson is a business owner, the treasurer is attorney at law, the downtown business owner is number four, number five member is a Realtor, six is also a business owner, and the number seven person is a resident. So we just need three additional.
Three, so three additional if it's five or two?
It'd be 10. So the DDA committee can serve, we just need three additional members that meet that criteria.
So why did they go to the 10 instead of the five?
Because it was seven. At the time, it's seven people.
Oh, it's seven.
Yes, so seven was over the five, so we went to the 10.
So with seven, they would need four.
That's correct. We need half of the committee, so we need five total. So you need half of the existing committee to either do that, and of course, we don't have half at this point. We only have two out of seven, so...
Doug Jones and my appointee is a real estate developer as well, Jeremy Farmer.
Okay.
Jeremy Farmer, Carl Simeon, Doug Jones, and Sonya Booker. That's four people right there.
Okay, so I have...
And Mr. Simeon is here, yeah.
Okay.
You're at the chair? No.
So that's four? Bless you.
Bless you.
One, two, three, okay. So I'll go back with what I have and give that to the consultants, see if that meets the criteria, and I can give an update at the meeting on Monday?
Cummings?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So what I was asking, my first question was, does it have to be either a developer, real estate, or what was the other?
It has to be a developer, a building, anyone in building or real estate industry.
Okay, but now since we have the four people, that's a 50/50, so we should be good, correct?
I believe so. Mr. Simeon is here, who serves on the DDA. I'm asking him to come forth, and if you could go through the names of the people on the committee, because it sounds like the DDA has already made the motion to accept the appointment. I'm assuming it's because they knew they had the 50%. Mr. Simeon, if you could?
I had a question.
I'll come to you after, Mr. Simeon.
All right. Yeah, looking at this, I don't know where you guys got the information, because you would have had my name, and I'm a commercial broker. So just to put like Realtors, so it's sort of like general...
Mr. Simeon, I just want you to, the names of the people on the...
Right, Jeremy, Jeremy Farmer, Sonya Booker.
So it's three.
Right, and let me see, is someone else? Doug Jones?
Mark Hardy's still on there?
No, Sonya is the chairperson, but Mark Hardy is still there.
Right.
All right, so it looks like we have enough. I'll take this back and revisit it, and I guess Monday meeting I'll have an update to make sure we have the Impact Fee Advisory Committee.
Well, I'm going to go to Councilmember Mitchell, and then I have a question.
Okay.
I digress.
Um, the, you need us to take action approving... Um, the, you need us to take action approving, like, what do you need from us?
Nothing now, since I have the additional names, um, I'll just get clarification, just to make for certain. If that's it, we just have enough, and on Monday's meeting, you just take a vote to put them in, um, power to pretty much instill the impact fee committee as is with the names. Um, I'll revise the list that I received, and that's it.
Madam City Attorney, what we've done during work sessions for items like this is if this included, we can put in parentheses, action may be taken at this meeting, um, and that way we could vote. At the work session, generally, we just have presentations, is that okay?
I think it would be okay if we were sure that we've met the fifty percent of those persons that occupy these professions to make up the seven-member, you know, impact fee. I'm not sure if we're sure, if we are, yes, certainly.
If you are, can we do it tonight, or do we need to wait till Monday?
If you are confident that we have the fifty percent, or the five people that make up these, um, various professions, you're in a meeting, you can vote.
Whether it's council's desire, we can either go ahead and appoint the members of the DDA as the advisory, impact fee advisory committee tonight, or wait till Monday, put it on the agenda as action may be taken on this item, and vote on Monday. Councilmember Shropshire?
Um, I would, we can just go ahead on and vote, because I think one of the requirements for the DDA board was that they had to be in those requirements that Ms. F- Melissa is stating. So, um, if we can go ahead on and vote, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Councilmember Mitchell?
I would like to see a list of the people before I vote on it, because I heard they had some issues with their meetings, so I would like to see a list before I vote on it. Thank you.
Okay.
So that's one out of the seven, councilmembers.
Can I just ask, Ms. Etcheverria, what would be your preference? Would you rather go back to the consultant and confirm, or would you be comfortable with a vote?
Yes, so, um, I just provided her the resumes of the individuals that I have, um, received, so definitely maybe it could have been outdated, and then they decide whether or not they meet that criteria based off of the information we provided. So yes, I would like an opportunity to take this to them, and then on Monday, with the names that you've asked, and I'll go ahead and do another presentation for a vote on Monday.
So you have to ask them first, right? You have to ask them first, right?
Right, so if they're already on the DDA, they already voted to be the impact fee development committee, and they took that vote on August the twenty-first.
Okay, so I would suggest that we ask them first, and then.
We did, and they took a vote.
That's what she just said, she rather we wait until Monday and then take action on Monday.
Okay.
So Madam City Clerk, if you can place this item on the work session agenda, and in parentheses, indicate action may be taken on this item.
Thank you.
Um, we need to remove item number two from the table. The motion to remove from the table, are we ready? Okay, the motion to remove item number two from the table.
So moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. City Attorney or Mr. Brown?
Okay. Madam Mayor, uh, we did have a discussion and determined, uh, staff is wanting the conditions that are in the ordinance. They are applicable to the multifamily rezoning, and so I know that Mr. Butler made a motion, and it was seconded to only include the condition that was in the staff report, and that according to staff would be inaccurate.
So we tabled the item. I think that previous motion no longer stands, so now we can make the motion, if we could scroll to the top of the page, to adopt the ordinance as indicated with the conditions included in the ordinance. Councilmember Butler?
Madam Mayor, make the motion that we adopt the ordinance as presented with, to be included are the conditions in this ordinance.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? Councilmember Shropshire?
I have a question, um, and I think at one point, uh, a design was presented, I know you had a site plan, but is there actual design of what it will look like?
I believe the applicant should have that information for you this evening.
So I don't have a presentation to show this evening, but referencing the last presentation in the email that was sent around August twenty-fourth, August twenty-fourth, there were, it's a design in those presentations, and it was the two duplexes.
Let's see if my computer's working, staff doesn't have that in their presentation, hold on just. When was it last before us? I'm looking at the August nineteenth agenda, I don't see it. Mr. Brown, staff.
I don't have that date, I'll have to ask, confer with staff, Mayor, if you'd allow me a couple of minutes. Um, I'm sure she's working on that as we speak, Kim.
Okay, we'll wait.
Madam Mayor, can I just add, while we're waiting for that date, um, that the ordinance, um, does require that the planning and community development department have oversight over design, and if, if the motion passes to go to R three, uh, one of the requirements is for it to meet the density requirements as stated in the comprehensive plan. So there is a limitation and some barriers around what can be done in the R three based on those requirements, design requirements, and then the density requirements of the comp plan.
All right, Councilmember Shropshire indicated she's okay with anything else, Councilmember Shropshire?
So they have to approve whatever is being built, okay.
They still have to get a building permit, it's a vacant lot, they still will have to go through approvals, and based on the conditions that were stated in the motion, look at, um, well, the one that we had before, the density requirements in the comp plan, that's gonna say how many units you can even put on, because remember, there's no variance, so it's not like she's asking to go over what's allowed in a R three zoning in the first place. And then in number three, um, it requires the department to have administrative oversight over, um, the design standards.
Okay.
So the type of building material, height is required in R three. The parking is a requirement in the ordinances, um, so there are certainly guardrails around what can be developed.
Okay, all right, thank you, I'm fine with that, thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, so we can just go, move forward, Mayor, uh, with.
That's what I'm doing.
Yeah, u- unless, Kim, you have the answer to that question, the mayor's question?
Councilmember Shropshire asked a question about the design. The applicant said it was shared previously. I was trying to figure out where it was shared so that that could be addressed. I asked staff for the dates, we weren't aware of them. Since post that, the city attorney explained that the designs and other things would have to be approved, and Councilmember Shropshire said that she's okay, do you have a design at this point, but it's no longer on the table, it's taken a while?
Um, I don't.
Any other discussion? Do you wanna, want them to pull it up? Pressure, pressure.
It has to go back to staff for approval, um, then I'm fine with that, but I guess we need to know what does, if we can get a copy of the comprehensive plan based on that area, so we'll know what it, what it will look like and what to expect.
Discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. Um, we are at comments from council. Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, and I would like to come on and say thank you to the East Point residents of Ward D for coming out to our community gathering. I also want to extend a special appreciation to the Public Works Director, Mr. Reeves, Lieutenant Douglas Stanley with East Point Fire, Eric Emmett with Stormwater. The East Point Department was definitely in the house with Lieutenants Bridges and Brosward, Bresward. I apologize. Sergeant Trimble, and last but not least, Officer McGee, and also Ms. Jessie. Thank you all for coming out and providing East Point Ward D residents with valuable information. My other comment is in relation to advancing health equity in the city of East Point, the photo exhibit. If you had the opportunity to see the photo exhibit, it was definitely a treat to see our city, I mean, just in photographs, they, um, developed a really nice presentation in the arts exchange, and it was definitely a good experience. I feel that the conversation should continue, and most importantly, the photo, the photograph shouldn't be put to waste or in a closet, I don't want to use the term wasted, but I do think this conversation should continue. So my question is for our interim city manager, is there any way that we can continue or put the photo exhibit up in East Point City Hall? Or over to the city hall annex?
Nobody is gonna go over there.
I don't know where.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll work on some options, we'll work on some options and come back.
Offline discussion to consider, I don't know that the city, I'm sorry, Mr. Brown, what were you saying?
No, I was gonna say, we'll work out some options and work with you, and see where, where that could be.
Okay, well, you have those options, I guess, by Friday, I don't know what they're gonna do with the information, but I do think that it should be displayed for everyone to see.
Okay.
All right, and that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, and to just piggyback off that, if you put it over at the annex, it's not visible, because customers don't go there. But if you put it in city hall, this building, you have people in and out that will see it. We, I, I do want to say this, um, I, um, we'll be doing a voter registration on October the sixth, on a Saturday, along with another group of community activists, um, right here on the city lawn. Oh, I'm sorry, that's my mom's birthday, October fifth, that Saturday, the voter registration, and I believe it'll start around eleven. So, um, we'll be doing that. So there, that's a motion, to do the voter registration right here on, at city hall, outside.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Councilmember Mitchell?
What, what is the motion? I think, I think.
To do a voter registration, to get people signed up, to make sure they're signed up to vote, uh, for the upcoming election.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Freely?
Uh, just, Councilmember Shropshire, under sort of who would be organizing it?
Um, I am.
So it would just be you?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Um, I think, so while Councilmember Shropshire would be organizing, if council approves the motion, it's a city event, and I think she's open to.
It, it's that, yeah.
The city.
Yeah.
Participation. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Anything else, Councilmember Shropshire?
I do. I do, I have something else I want to say. It's, um, unfortunate that I have to come back to this, but I do. I want to clear up some misinformation that's out in the public, um, by residents, and in reference to the kids being in the fountain. And the misinformation is, I should have approached the kids, or I should have brought it to the attention of certain people. And when I walked up and I saw it, I did bring it to the attention of the staff that was at the event, and I mentioned it three times, to the staff that was at the event. Also, this is not a retaliation to get anyone in trouble, as one, um, councilmember stated on social media. This was about the safety and well-being of the kids, and putting them in a position that was a liability on the city, because at the end of the day, the fountain have wiring and lights, which they could have got shocked, but when I brought it to the attention of staff, staff didn't have any, um, they didn't worry about it, it was a non-issue to them. And as far as holding the parents accountable, that has to be where staff steps in and tell the parent, oh, your child can't do that, and if the child continues to do that, then you hold staff accountable, but at that time, staff was at the event, and I addressed it to staff, that's what I'm required to do. As far as the splash pad being on, it was on on Sunday, I also have a picture of that, where the water is coming out. And luckily, your phone actually dates in time when it happened. So I do want to clear up that misinformation that was out there, calling me all kind of names and everything else, but I'm cool with that. But I do want to put out there that I did address, I went to staff and I addressed the issue, and what I was told, but don't worry, we got that under control, or if their parents letting them do it, then whatever. That was the response that I received, but I did address it to staff, and it is, and it was a serious issue. And luckily, no kids got sick behind that, because that is recycled water. And to also, um, see that people let their dogs use the fountain. So now the question is, when are we going to put up signs about? about not getting in the fountain? Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Well, I, I would say, we need to look at it, and we definitely need to inform our employees about safety, and that they're authorized and empowered to take action on any unsafe, unsafe thing that happens. But my response, my response to the signage issue, that is totally up to you guys if you wanna do it. I tend to not wanna do something like that. You put up too many signs, you know, closed-circuit TV, under surveillance, stop, don't. You know, a lot of rules, you know, uh, can impact that. I think we can, I think that we could police ourselves, you know, if we inform our employees when they are in and around the area. If they see someone doing someone's sake, they should be able to approach that person, or call the event organizer, or call the police, or whoever they need to call, depending on who's doing what. Uh, but maybe that's something that, you know, we need to pay more attention to, is just making sure that our employees are, are aware of what issues need to be addressed. And that's, that's how I would approach that. Obviously, we can do signs. I've seen some signs out there personally, and it's just too many. But, you know, if you wanna put a sign out there, if it's the Willis Board, we can do that. I would hope that we could just try to change the behavior first with the employees, by talking to them, and informing them what we'd like to see, what we expect, and then, move forward with that. But if we need a sign, we can do a sign.
You said you've seen some signage out there?
Yeah, like, um, there's some signage out there, they're like, small ones. You, you can't really see them, but it's kinda congregated.
The sign, I, I think that's the challenge, if they're there, nobody sees them. Where are they, and what do they say?
I don't remember what they recall exact wording, but it just talks about all kinds of things, in terms of, you know, where to go, where to walk. They're right out here.
But nothing about the fountain?
Nothing about the fountain.
Yeah.
No.
Councilmember Shropshire?
Um, I'm gonna refer to the city attorney. Do we legally, do we need to put any signage up to warn people not to get in the fountain?
I don't know if you legally require to put it up. If you know now there is an issue, and it is reoccurring, then it would behoove you to put it up. So, now that you know it's an issue, uh, you're on notice. So, the legal ramifications of that is that if someone were harmed by entering the fountain. But it is a attraction. Signs could help, it may not prevent, um, but at least they will warn. But I'm just trying to think of other, you know, city attractions, and whether or not there is signage, um, where there is an issue. I don't know if this is a one-off event since I've been here. Uh, it may not be reoccurring, um, but signage won't hurt, I will tell you that. And actually, I would recommend that we probably should reach out to our premise liability insurance to find out what they recommend, because they cover the grounds in our property. They may recommend something, um, to ensure or reduce some liability.
Yeah, I, I think, um, we definitely should take a next step, because there was staff out there, and it was about the staff's attention, and people... The kids were still allowed to wade in the water. And so, I do think we now have notice of something different. And so, speaking, the recommendation is speaking with our premise liability, um, provider, and seeing what their recommendation would be, would be great. So, maybe you can bring that back to us. I don't know if, if, whenever you get it, so, if it's by the work session, or, um, by, um, the next meeting, just whenever you get it, if you can let us know. And actually, if you could let us know by email, and we could decide what action, if any, needs to be taken. Any other comments from council? Um, I wanna say thank you to Morehouse School of Medicine, on the successful third annual health equity summit, that really had a lot of providers here. Timo Goody was here, and we had a special surprise. He actually performed a little bit, um, rapped the song, a part of a song, Soul Food. So, that was delightful for me, for sure. Took me back to my college days. But there was a lot of work, um, that went into it. I wanna thank our Health Equity Community Advisory Board, and the members who were part of that. Cadre was a partner, um, and presented. And, you know, when we think about the work that Morehouse School of Medicine has done over the last three years, and the one point two million dollars that has been provided through a federal grant from the U.S. Office of Health and Human Services, Office of Minority Affairs, I believe, to advance health equity, is looking at policies, um, through our land use, looking at, um, our food insecurity challenges, as well as environmental issues within our city. And so, um, they have applied for a second round of grant funding, which is six hundred thousand, up to six hundred thousand dollars a year for up to four years. So, potentially, two point four million dollars, that would allow us to continue that work. From a policy lens, would also bring in and build more community advocates, community support, and really, um, do more around environmental, um, justice areas as well. And so, um, I'm very optimistic, we have not heard yet whether or not they were funded. But in the first round of funding, it was three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars per year for up to three years. And when we got to the third year, we got three hundred and seventy-five thousand the first year, the second year, and the third year, they actually gave us four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. They gave an extra hundred thousand dollars because of the work that Morehouse School of Medicine is doing collaboratively with the city, and all our health partners around this work. And so, it speaks volumes to the leadership of Megan Douglas, who is, um, leading and coordinating this effort, um, through Morehouse School of Medicine. And so, hopefully, soon and very soon, we will learn about whether or not we've been granted, or Morehouse School of Medicine has been granted funding for the second round of funding. The Photo Voice was absolutely, um, an amazing experience. I got chills just seeing our community, um, because it's not about me. It's not about an individual. Any council member, any one person, it's really about our community. And the work that we're doing around health equity is really empowering our community, and really helping to improve, um, health outcomes within our community. And so, we're excited about that work, and know that it will continue. The Office of Health, um, Equity, Inclusion, and Empowerment, Ms. Johnson was also a part of the, um, activities for the weekend. And so, we built in our city's infrastructure, um, a way to continue to support the work to ensure that we are helping all residents live healthy lives and thrive. And so, definitely want to say thank you to them and all the staff that helped, um, partner with them to, to put on our third annual health equity. I don't believe I have anything else. Do we have any executive session items this evening?
Madam Mayor, I have four legal.
What kind? All legal? I meant, um, litigation?
That's what I meant, litigation.
Okay, the, the, you got me. See, I'm putting my little, um... Four legal. Miss, for litigation. See, you got me. For litigation. Um, Mr. Brown, you have any executive session items?
Just one, real estate.
Um, council, do you have any executive session items?
Legal.
Anyone else?
Real estate.
Anything else? How many personnel? Two? Anyone else? So, I have two real estate, two personnel, and five litigation.
Madam Mayor?
Yep.
I forgot where we're going.
Five, two, two.
No, it, uh, recess into executive session for five...
Litigation.
Litigation, two personnel, and two real estate.
Some moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, when we hear that. Can I get a motion to reconvene?
Motion to reconvene?
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. In the matter of Davies versus City of East Point, need a motion to proceed as discussed in executive session.
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, motion to approve executive session meeting minutes.
Motion to approve executive session meeting minutes?
It's been moved and properly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
It's been moved and properly seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, goodnight, East Pointers.